Well, it's past nine o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started with the meeting this morning. We have the roll call. Bill and Lori are here and Sonny is attending via conference call. Item number one is the approval of the agenda.
Good morning.
I need a motion first.
Motion approved.
The approval of the agenda? I believe I heard Sonny on the line, but it was hard to hear.
Yes, I did.
So for roll call, Sonny?
Hi, here.
Mark?
Oh, I, sorry.
Lori, Rich?
Here.
Bill?
Yep.
All right. Do we need to approve the agenda again, or we're good there?
We're good.
All right. That brings us to item number two, presentation of the draft comprehensive plan for Pennington County by Matrix Design Group. PJ, I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, PJ Conover, Director of Plan Department. So the item before you today is an introduction to what Matrix Design Group has come up with for the comprehensive plan. Again, it's still just a draft document. There's three more public meetings this week in Wall and Keystone and also here in Rapid City. And these, this is public workshop set number five. So each set has three meetings. So this is meeting thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Without that, I know we have to end early. I'll leave it up to Felipe. And if you have any questions for him, I'm sure he can answer. Rick won't be here until later this afternoon. So I think a lot of you have met Felipe last time he was here. He was kind of in the audience backing up Rick, but he's the man in the front today. So Felipe?
Thank you, PJ. I appreciate it. Members of the commission, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Mr. Chair?
I'm the first Vice Chair. The Chair is absent today.
Great. All right. Well, I appreciate everybody having me here. As PJ indicated, I have been here previously and working with Mr. Rust on the project. Today I get a speaking part. So I appreciate you indulging me. As PJ mentioned, this is our last set of workshops this week, beginning this evening in Wall. And then we're going to skip Tuesdays just so that we stay away from the election and any confusion that may happen. And then we'll be back out on Wednesday. As PJ mentioned, we're going to be in Rapid City Wednesday evening and then Keystone on Thursday evening. So, and actually, we're going to be out here again Thursday morning, just in the hallway for those who attend the commission meeting as well. Just give me information on. So if you see us out in the hallway, we're not loitering. We're trying to expand our reach here. So I'll try to make it somewhat quick. Each of you had received a draft of some of the goals and policies by email on Friday. And that's what's before you there in your place. And then we also provided a draft of the updated land use categories and future land use map. Before we get into that, I thought we would spend a little bit of time giving you a little bit of background as to our public outreach and some of the information that we got, which led to some of the final recommendations in the draft plan today. So as you know, PJ, of course, has been the project manager for us, been very, very responsive. Staff has been great. I'm sure you guys have experienced the same. But as PJ had mentioned, Rick Rust is the project manager. I'm the deputy project manager. Rick is could get in until about twelve this afternoon. So I am holding down the floor. What we're going to do today is go again the project status, do a little bit about the existing conditions because I'm not sure how much information you've gotten on that. We're going to recap a little bit on the workshops and then getting into the goals and policies and the future land use map. Then finally, we'll briefly discuss the next steps as we start getting into the final hearing process and recommendation from the commission to the board.
Okay. Excuse me real quick. Am I the only one hearing the feedback from Sonny's phone? If you were to be on...
I can hear it too.
Should he mute that and then we shouldn't get that right on his end?
Could mute his phone when he's not talking?
Sonny, did you catch that? Can you mute your phone and then unmute it when you want to talk?
Hey, Rich. I've already got my phone muted. I don't know where you're hearing feedback from.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. So briefly, again, recapping the comprehensive plan itself, it really is the foundation for all planning decisions that the county makes, whether it is the commission recommendation or ultimately the board approval. Whether you're talking about agriculture or you're talking about a subdivision plan, that all really starts through guidance in the comprehensive plan. Then the next level of specificity then gets into land development code, site plan, and of course, building plans, and then ultimately a certificate of occupancy. So as you get up the ladder there, it gets a lot more specific and a lot less discretionary and a lot more administrative. So really, the time to be involved for the public as well as the commission is at the comprehensive plan land use stage. So the comprehensive plan really is a long-term document. It again covers anywhere between fifteen, twenty, sometimes thirty years. It's comprehensive, meaning it covers a lot of subjects, but it is general in the same respect. It doesn't go into a lot of details. So for instance, if you wanted to get into floodplain details and what's regulated, that's not held here. This is just a general guidance document that provides overall goals and policies that the county can strive for. So again, it's not a regulatory document. It is a guidance document. So what is it? It's a vision for the future. And then probably what most people understand to be a comprehensive plan is what they see in the land use map. And again, those are future land use recommendations that guide future development within the county. So why are we updating the plan? Well, the last one was updated in 2033. Things have changed since then. And so the county has gone about trying to modernize its comprehensive plan as well as deal with some of the new growth within the county. Some of the other policies that are being discussed as part of this process is, of course, the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, nuisance ordinance, as well as the floodplain ordinance. So where are we at in the process? Well, we've gone through the tasks one through five, which includes the public workshops one through four. We are now again heading into our fifth and final workshop this week where we're presenting some of the components of the draft plan. And then finally, we'll be back before you for a formal adoption here, I believe in July. Is that right, PJ? July, August timeframe? Okay. So we'll be back before you. This isn't your last bite at the apple. But nonetheless, this does give you a preview of what you're going to see here in a couple of months. So what do we do? Here you see photos from the first three workshops. And really, what we did was started the process by educating the public, helping them understand not only what a comprehensive plan is, but also trying to get information on what they believe the issues as well as the opportunities were throughout the county. Very informative. It was part of our process. And then through that information then is where we start developing some of the goals and policies. But we also started identifying some of the base information, which I'll show you here in a little bit. Again, the public workshops this week are in Wall, Rapid City, and then Keystone on Thursday. So the base information that I just alluded to is what we call the existing conditions report. This report is available on the project website, viewed2040.com. And what this does, it provides a real good base information for the comprehensive plan that looks at past and future population growth, demographics, job growth, a whole lot of base information that goes into the comprehensive plan. With that, some of the information highlighted here, Pennington County is the second most populous county within the state. Importantly though, majority of that population is within incorporated areas, primarily Rapid City, but other incorporated areas within the city. Interestingly, since 1970, there has been steady growth, but from 2000 to 2010, there's been a slight dip in population. That really is most likely due to annexations, which tends to reduce the county population and not necessarily outmigration, at least in Pennington County's case. Twenty thirty-five, the population is projected to grow to one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty-six. That again, we have taken into consideration, a lot of that is going to be within incorporated areas, not only what's incorporated today, but what we anticipate to be expanded in the future. That's important from a land use perspective, particularly as we look at county areas that are adjacent to these urbanized areas, which we'll get into here a little bit later. So employment by industry, educational services, healthcare, social assistance, that is the largest category of job industries within the county. And that has to do, of course, with some higher education, but also the healthcare within the county. Arts entertainment is the second. And then the third highest industry by employment is retail trade. And of course, we can expect to see that, particularly given the very strong tourism industry within the county. Also, as part of the existing conditions report, we do look at existing land use. As you can see, really what we, the primary land use is existing bare land, whether it is federal land, open space, or ag land throughout the county. The next highest category is residential growth, which is primarily within some of the urbanized areas. And then, as can be expected, your commercial and employment, atomic uses are along the major corridors within the county. What we put together here is what we pulled in some of the building permits and growth over time. As you can see, some of the strongest growth has occurred between 2001 and 2016. That was a high-growth area. You can see some of those red spots around the county there. That is area that has residential parcels that have been constructed during that timeframe. Looking a little bit closer into Rapid City, you see how much this has happened, of course, within the urbanized area, but also around the outskirts. And again, as we start looking at land use, it's important to not only recognize that, but to provide guidance as they continue to develop within the county. Public lands is, again, ownership. It's not a land use, but all the federal lands is really, I don't have a percentage here, but it's about fifty percent of all of Pennington County that is considered public lands. That again is something that we dealt with in the future land use math, which I'll explain a little bit later as well. So from year to year, residential development, as you can see here, some of the, besides the more recent growth trend, there was actually some high-growth time during the 1940s and 50s. And that's when actually you did see a lot of urban growth. A lot of what is out there today was developed in the 1940s and 50s. It wasn't really until you get into the 2000s that you see a lot of new growth within the county. And as can be expected, commercial properties mirrored that growth as well. One of the things that we looked at within the infrastructure, it's not only the major roadways, but we did take a look at some of the bridges, particularly the ones that had reduced load restrictions. That's important, particularly as we start looking at some of the transportation routes and in particular, how it may affect future job growth and attraction of economic development. And again, as can be expected with regard to public safety, you do have a lot of coverage within the urbanized areas. In the less populated areas, there is limited coverage, but again, that is to be expected in a rural county. And then finally, we did look at some of the wildfire hazards and try to develop some goals and policies to help guide future development in these areas. And of course, as can be expected, as you get into the Black Hills, that's where the risk is a little bit more prominent. So what did we learn through the workshops? I'm going to go through these. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me along the way. But I'm going to go through these, all four, before we start getting into the new information here this afternoon, this morning. First workshop, again, it was an opportunity for us to go understand what some of the residents had for concerns, whether it was existing land use, some of the nuisances. And really, one of the things that summarizes it is what we like to ask. What is the biggest threat that you find that you think threatens the growth and development within the county? And in this particular case, the most prevalent was jobs. Over a third of those that were there that participated felt that jobs was an area that we really needed to improve upon. Then also infrastructure, as well as providing a diverse housing stock and more specifically, a more affordable housing stock. During this time... Yes, sir? When you're talking about jobs, are you talking numbering jobs or pay? Pay was one of the high-expanding new industry as well as more technical jobs. And in fact, what you'll find as we get into the plan here, some of the recommendations were to expand on the military presence and try to attract more of the aerospace industry jobs, particularly opportunities that may present themselves around the airport. So that was an area that was cited as an area for growth. Right? Okay. Thank you. Mm-hmm. During the first workshop, we also started working on a vision statement, which we did finalize throughout this process, and I'll present that here a little bit later. So the top issues, lack of affordable housing, road maintenance, excuse me, lack of year-round jobs, and then different levels of service for rural and urban communities. And again, the last point there is to be expected, especially when you do get into some of the rural areas. But it's something that we do still try to address within the goals and policies. Top opportunities, as you can expect, recreation amenities, some first-class open-space facilities here within Pennington County, great natural resources, the tourist industry, of course, is a big strength, as well as the educational institutions. And some of the other opportunities, again, surrounding agriculture are opportunities to build a value-added industry, agriculture industry as well. Yes?
What do you mean by value-added agriculture?
Well, a good example I'd like to give is peanut farmers. Peanut farmers will farm the peanuts, but send them out someplace else to actually make the peanut butter. There's opportunities to bring those type of industries where you're having that type of ag product to build value added. And Pennington County's, I'm actually, since I'm jumping in here, I'm not really sure what the predominant ag product is in Pennington County, but the opportunity to look for those industries that actually process the ag product here and build the value into that ag product before shipping it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
Can I make a comment? Would that include something like vineyards and breweries and stuff like that?
Absolutely.
Those are the kind of things you're talking about, right?
That's right. Yep. Thank you for that. Second set of workshops, we did go through refining the vision statement, which will be the next slide here, and then also start to refine some of their concerns with regard to land uses. So the final vision statement, you see here before you. This is the final vision statement that's proposed as part of the final general plan. The red highlights there are those that were refined during that second set of workshops, where it was noted that Pennington County is a unique part of South Dakota, especially given the eastern plains juxtaposed against the Black Hills and then also recognizing the metro area of Rapid City. A sense of community was important, as well as a frontier spirit, as well as protecting the natural, cultural, and historic resources. And then finally, getting, one or two of the things that those that participated wanted to make sure that they highlighted as far as future vision is concerned, is that career and housing opportunities were prevalent, as well as excellent schools and maintaining the quality of life. So again, the way to really view the vision here is that it's forward-thinking. It's imagining yourself in the year 2040 and what do you see Pennington County being in the year 2040. So part of workshop two, we also started looking in more detail. We heard again, as I mentioned in workshop one, some of the issues that we heard, transportation and housing. What we tried to do at that point then is take those issues and opportunities and drill them down into a little bit more detail as to exactly what their issues are. Here you see a worksheet that we use to kind of get through some of those issues. What were some of the issues? Well, there was some confusion with regard to land use designations. There was also concern for roadways, connectivity, maintenance of roadways were raised as an issue. And then as part of this, we also spent a little time with staff on about half the script, just going through some of the detailed issues that they face on a daily basis. So getting then to our last workshop, which was back in March, the workshop number four. We did, then as we identified the issues, we drilled down to a little bit more detail. We then presented them, the participants, a set of alternatives. And those alternatives were couched in terms of the issues such as lack of affordable housing. And then we went through a couple different options on how to address that. That then informed us on how to drill down into more detail with regard to how to move forward with the final comprehensive plan, which you have here today. So some of those highlights were land use category refinement, enhanced economic development surrounding the airport, as I mentioned here a little bit earlier, expanded job opportunities through new industry and value-added agriculture, improved roadways, and of course, as can be expected, those who wanted to protect Ellsworth Air Force Base as well. So that kind of brings us to what we are here to do today. So in front of you, you have two worksheets. One of them has some draft goals and policies. The other has the future land use map along with the revised land use categories. And we're going to start with the land use designations. We're going to spend a little time going through that so you kind of understand what's being proposed with regard to the 2040 land use designations and what some of the changes are and why they changed and how it has improved the future land use map. So on the left here, you'll see some of the highlights. The agriculture category was actually expanded so that it covered both categories, not just the general and the limited, but it was expanded to really just capture all of that. And so the ag category is a minimum lot size of ten dwelling units an acre, which captures the limited agriculture. But of course, it goes up to capture all the general agriculture as well. A new category called ranchette residential is proposed in order to address a gap really between what you have in agriculture today and what is low-density residential. There really is no category that covers that. So in order to address that, what we're proposing is what's called a ranchette residential category. This category would have a minimum of five acres, so it wouldn't necessarily meet the ten-acre minimum. As you know, there's a lot of properties out there that can't meet the ag ten-acre minimum. So this is a way to address that as well, so that they actually have a category to go in that's not as dense as low-density, but still maintains a rural character for those areas. You'll see a lot of this as we get into the map within the Black Hills area. Rural residential. Rural residential is really a one-for-one. So if you look at low-density residential on the 2003 future land use map, the low-density residential is the same thing. I'm sorry, the, yes, the low-density category is the same thing. And then the rural residential category is, let me back up here a little bit. Low-density and rural residential are the same category. There's really nothing changed other than the name. Low-density was split up from the suburban residential category. As you can see on the left with the 2003 future land use designation, the suburban residential category really captures a lot of different land use categories. So it's really hard to transition uses from a suburban setting to a more urban setting. So what we've proposed is to break that into three different categories, a low, a suburban, and urban residential. The intent for urban residential is really to be within those areas that are within a metro area. And in fact, I can think of only one where that's fit within the Rapid City metro area that's still unincorporated county in the south area of Rapid City metro area. Otherwise, the county is predominantly rural residential and low-density residential. The suburban residential, you'll note on the map on the inside of that spread there, is primarily within Rapid City metro area. Those suburban categories are again, are intended as a transition area that allows development to occur and take place within the metro area. But that importantly deals with one of the other aspects that I mentioned of the county. As I mentioned earlier, the county is urbanizing in some areas, particularly around Rapid City. In those areas, it's important to make sure that there is an appropriate transition, particularly if development occurs within the county and at some point then gets annexed into one of the adjacent metro areas. And that is another way to address that issue by providing that breakout of three different residential categories. As we move down then, the land use categories, the neighborhood and commercial. Yes, sir?
Could I ask a question about the suburban residential? So do you see the low-density residential as one dwelling unit per lot? Or would there be multiple? And I guess where I'm going with this is you say three dwelling units per acre, but the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, which is roughly half an acre. So I was wondering how the math was working there.
How, you wonder how many what?
Would there just be one dwelling unit per lot?
Yes. Yeah. So one plotted lot, there would be one dwelling unit, correct?
So then we really couldn't get quite three dwelling units per acre with a 20,000...
With the 20,000, yeah, you'd be just shy at the 20,000 square foot lot. But again, that matches your zoning ordinance. But it's a little bit more than two, but not as much as three. I suppose that in this particular category, that can be revised to be 2.5 to be a little bit more accurate. But you're right, that would only be one unit per lot with the minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
So then getting into the commercial categories, there really is no demonstrative change in any of the commercial or industrial categories. However, there's a slight name change between the general commercial and highway services, just to be a little bit more accurate for what those uses currently allow within those categories. And then finally, yes?
Is the designation highway services kind of an older term that people use?
It is, and I would characterize it more as an industrial-heavy commercial-type category. And so that is why, again, we get into the name change recommended being commercial. So it is intended to be regional, commercial, highway, commercial. In some respects, what you would find here in the metro area being more, for lack of a better term, strip commercial or large commercial centers.
So more like, that's why you use the term neighborhood commercial, right? To distinguish that? To distinguish that, is that right?
Correct. Correct, so neighborhood commercial would be less intense. That would be more appropriate next to residential, uh, categories. Whereas the, the commercial would be more appropriate on major, uh, major intersections. Yep. So one of the other things, um, that I'd like to point out is that the 2003 future land use calls out public land. Um, and really, public land isn't ownership, it's not an actual land use. And so what we're recommending is that we still, we still recognize the public land. In fact, we still have a, a land ownership map. But from a land use perspective, all of that public land does have a use and is pred- predominantly open space. Uh, with that being said, there are some, uh, historic public rights within those areas that we do recognize within that category. But for the most part, um, all the public land then as a land use perspective is open space. So we're talking, uh, of course, um, the badlands, the Mount Rushmore, all that area is, is technically open space, uh, but yet publicly owned land. And then I'm going to jump real quick to the peace law land. We did identify that in the Black Hills, uh, and that really is just, uh, land that the county has no jurisdiction over. So we just recognize that and show that within the future land use map. And then finally, there is the, uh, category PUD sensitive. PUD sensitive was a land use category in the 2003 land use plan, but there really was no direction on what that is and how you develop within those areas. So, uh, what we are recommending is that that PUD sensitive then gets re-designated to a category that's more appropriate within the 2040 designation. So if you look at the map on the inside spread, really, all that PUD sensitive was predominantly within, within the Rapid City metro area and the Black Hills. So what we did to recategorize that was we identified it, uh, uh, the pri- all the private land. Once we identified the private land, then we identified the size of the property. Uh, it was predominantly less than 10 acres. So that allowed us then to identify a lot of that acreage as ranchette residential, um, which is the new category again, that's, uh, between five and 10 acres. And then the balance of that, then, there was other properties that were less than five acres, but more than one. And then the balance of that then was identified as rural residential. So, uh, that then allowed these uses to be a lot more accurately categorized so that when people wanted to, um, add a barn or add a unit, they're within a category that's a more appropriate than PUD sensitive, that doesn't have, uh, really much direction on how to, um, either subdivide or add a new structure within those categories. So that summarizes really, uh, the changes from 2003 to 2040. Uh, and I, I know it's a lot to kind of take in right now, but hopefully, um, you start to see some of the, um, some of the benefits for the recommendations here today. Any other questions as we go forward here? Okay, so, I did kind of put in here a little bit more description on some of these categories. Again, the, the ag category, again, the intent is that the compatible zoning is going to be A1 and A2. Again, the same uses that would be allowed in, in the ag category, uh, previously is still, is still allowed today. We're just combining them into one category. Uh, this gives a little bit more detail, um, on the ranchette residential. The allowed, uh, zoning or the compatible zoning within the ranchette residential is A2. Uh, within the rural residential is LDR or low density residential. Again, as described a little bit earlier, neighborhood commercial is intended as those that are appropriately located adjacent to, uh, existing residential or within neighborhoods. And then the commercial are those more heavily, uh, utilized commercial intersections. Open space, as I mentioned earlier, um, really is, uh, the predominant use of all the federal lands. The compatible zoning is A1 and A2. And, and then also again, what we, we do acknowledge is that there are some pre-existing, um, homestead rights in some of these areas where residential is already, uh, developed. So now we get into some of the goals and policies and, and that's the other handout that you have there. Um, and if I could, we'll start there with the first page really. Um, this is just a little bit of an update. As you can see, we do have the final vision statement, uh, which we went through a little bit earlier here. Uh, and so that then will be incorporated as the guiding vision for the comprehensive plan. So now actually, um, we do have the goals and policies section on the inside spread and the backside. Really what I'd like to do at this time, uh, I know that you guys haven't had this for a long time, uh, just over the weekend, we know that there's a, um, a lot more time between now and the next time that we're out. But we did want to really kind of make this a little bit more interactive and see if you had any thoughts and comments on some of the, uh, issues that were raised and how they were addressed and some of the proposed, uh, goals and policies throughout the document. Um, and then once we wrap that up, we're gonna, we're gonna finish up by going through some of the next steps and, and, um, uh, as part of the process. So we're, we're kind of winding down here. So now's your chance to kind of provide some of the feedback on, uh, what you think of not only the, the future land use maps and the land use categories, but also some of the goals and policies here. We can, we can go through these one by one, or I can just open it up, however you prefer. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
Any, uh, id- ideas from the board? Uh, you guys would like to?
Go one by one and
We'll go through them.
Questions in a certain category, then we'll just keep going.
All right. I have some general, uh, questions, um, uh, before we get started, uh, that don't really, uh, cover every single one of them. But are all of these proposed policies a result of the public, the public comments?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so particularly those that you find, there's, there's some within the document, um, that we propose that were not resulting from direct input, but from, um, our experience in dealing with some of the issues that we're proposing. What you have before you here are all the, um, I shouldn't say all, but some of the major issues and concerns that were raised and how we're proposing to address them within specific policies in the plan.
Okay. And then, um, based on the size of our county and our, and our population, our width, if you will, um, do you think that the public outreach was successful?
You know, gauging from, um, past experience, and we've, we've done these, um, in fact, actually, we were out here previously doing the, uh, joint land use study for Ellsworth Air Force Base here a couple of years ago.
Okay.
And in comparison to that, uh, it was actually well attended, as well as can be expected for a rural county. And comparative to other jurisdictions that we do, uh, I would say it was about average. It wasn't a lot, uh, we'd always like to, to, to have more. Um, but as can be expected, uh, real quick, we did split it up, as you can see, into three different areas. We, we were all, whenever we're out here, we met in the Black Hills, we met in the Eastern Plains, and we also met in the metro area of Rapid City. As can be expected, the most well attended were those here in Rapid City. Uh, but generally, again, just to, uh, again, quickly, uh, answer your question. It was, uh, well attended, it was average, we would have liked to have it higher, but it was, uh, attended well enough to get a real good handle on the issues.
Okay. I guess my last general question, were, are, were there any surprises from your guys' perspective, uh, based on, let's say, your previous knowledge, uh, with the work at the Air Force Base, um, for our county, um, from what you've learned from the, the, the public outreach?
You know, um, there, honestly, there was not a lot of surprises. And I say that because we were out here a couple of years ago through the, uh, joint land use study with Ellsworth Air Force Base. So we're pretty, uh, well versed on what the issues were. Um, if I'd have to categorize something as a surprise, uh, or at least, um, um, the, the, one of the bigger issues was the, of course, the jobs and, and increasing, uh, high skilled jobs, higher paying jobs for the area. Uh, but also a recognition that affordable housing kind of goes hand in hand with that. Um, you can't bring in new industry without having, um, some affordable housing. So, the, if I'd say there was a surprise, it was a surprise that those who participated were informed enough to know the connectivity of some of the issues like that.
Okay. Um, I have several more, but I will defer to the board for now. So we'll get started with the first category. Anybody have any, uh, questions or concerns about the, uh, the first issue? What is the LU category?
Yeah, okay, um, actually, I should have put a, um, a, um, cheat sheet in here. LUH, in fact, I'll go through those here real quick. The, the comprehensive plan is broken up into different chapters. Those different chapters are identified by, uh, a topic. In this particular case, LUH stands for the land use housing chapter. Um, ED stands for economic development. TC stands for transportation circulation. HS is for health and safety. PSF is public services and facilities. And then finally, NCR is natural and cultural resources. So I've, tho- those are showing up there on, on the, um, on the slide that you're looking at. Land use, housing, economic development, transportation, health and safety, public services and facilities, and then natural and cultural resources are the different chapters within the document.
Mr. Vice Chair, I ask, uh, can you expand on the combined Native American lands with open space and what that entails?
Uh, well, um, one of the issues that was, that was raised was, uh, specifically going off of this, was one of the residents had thought that maybe the native land should just be called open space. Um, we did not do that, um, particularly because there's no jurisdiction the county has over the peace law lands. And that really is, um, the one area that is treated like a metro area, like Rapid City. There's no land uses within Rapid City, as you can see in your map. So the same applies to peace law. So even though it was a recommendation, it was an issue that was brought up, um, we did not actually, um, merge that into open space.
That was a recommendation from, uh, somebody attending that?
It was one of the comments that we got, yes.
Okay.
So on the, on the left-hand side here, the issues and concerns are specific issues that, uh, were written or brought up by some of the residents participating in the, in the workshops.
Okay. Thank you, sure.
Any other questions on item one? Okay. Moving on to item number two. Do you just want to do a quick summary or expand on each one of these then when we go over them?
Sure, so, um, the, the second issue that was raised, and again, this was, uh, raised on a number of occasions, and that was, uh, to recognize the importance of the regional airport, uh, and protecting, uh, the area around, uh, the regional airport. And some of the policies that we've developed, uh, in order to recognize that is, again, as you read these, the way that we draft the goals, it is future tense, as if we're in 2040 today. So this is an example of that. So if you look at LUH4, a good way of kind of thinking about this is, in 2040, land uses in Pennington County are compatible with Ellsworth Air Force Base and Rapid City Regional Airport operations. So that's the way that we've drafted all the goals. And then the policies then follow on that. So the next one, they're dealing with a policy. The county, the county should ensure that land use density and intensity within the military influence area remains consistent with the land use guidance contained in the current ACUs and JALIS. And of course, those are the, uh, land use compatibility studies that were developed by SEDITA. And then again, also recognizing the importance of the regional airport, the county should promote opportunities to attract industries that support military or aviation. This could be done through public-private partnerships, incubators, or other similar processes.
So these proposed policies are almost like, uh, recommendations?
Correct.
Is that right? Are these just going to be statements within the plan itself?
Well, they are, uh, what we also do then is prepare an implementation plan. Uh, implementation then would pull on these policies and then develop some guidance for the county to start working towards some of these. So for instance, um, and in particular, the county should promote opportunities to attract industries. Uh, an implementation measure that would support that is the county should update or work with Rapid City to develop a long-range economic development strategic plan for the regional airport. So that would be an idea of, of an implementation measure that would go along with this. And then also set a timeline for that. Is that a short-term, you know, one to three years, midterm, five years, or long-term, 10 years? So that really is, is how a lot of this works. Again, as I mentioned earlier, it's a, a guidance document, it's not a regulatory document. So we are trying to provide guidance without, again, explicitly calling out a regulation, so to speak.
Okay. Any ques- any further questions on item two?
Did you address any, um, anything as far as being able to reduce the cost of air transportation in Rapid and out of Rapid City? Did you discuss that at all?
No, um, not off the top of my head. Uh, do you have any ideas for that?
Well, no, we're not, not really. I mean, I, you know, short of subsidizing, um, I, I really don't know how to address that, but I know that it's a problem. Speaking to industry, industry leaders in, in the area and the people that fly in and out of Rapid City, it's incredibly expensive. And, uh, um, part of that is the number of people, obviously, that are flying in and out of Rapid City isn't high enough to justify lowering, lowering prices. But, you know, if you look at some areas like Shadrin, north of, or, yeah, east of us in, um, help me out, guys, city in Wyoming.
Billings, just go to Billings.
Gillette, Gillette. Um, um, and some of those types of, of towns around us have, uh, access to an airline called Boutique Care, for example. And then there, I don't know how they're managing to operate at the prices that they're offering, but it's drawing ridership away from Rapid City, without a doubt. Um, when you can fly to Denver for $59 each way, you know, that's, nobody's going to pay 265 to fly out of Rapid. Well, some people do, but I, I think that that's an area that has long needed, uh, to be addressed. And I think that it would encourage more industry, especially when it comes to, you talked in here about, um, shipping and, and, um, that type of stuff, it would attract more industry to be able, that could ship air freight in and out of Rapid City at a reasonable price. Right now, I think the bulk of our, of our product leaves here in trucks. We wouldn't be a good fit for something like an Amazon warehouse in Rapid City. Because most of that's going out air.
That's a good point, actually, um, just anecdotally, my own experiences. Actually, Allegiant is very affordable where I, where I come from. And maybe there's, um, a way to expand their presence and expand, you know, what markets they, they hit coming into Rapid City. And maybe there's a way to expand their presence and expand, you know, what markets they hit coming into Rapid City.
Right.
But the good news is, is that you already have an airline that does provide cheaper air.
That's true.
It's just a matter of expanding their footprint of where they fly.
Right.
So that's, in some respect, that could be a head start. And in fact, that is definitely a policy that could be added, particularly as we start talking about implementation and where the city and the county should be looking to reduce those costs.
And I hate to even say the word subsidized.
Yeah.
That's a good part of my vocabulary.
Yeah, there's already some market solutions here. It's a matter of trying to see how we can expand them. And part of that is really identifying the, not necessarily subsidized, but identifying the market for a group like Allegiant that may be able to expand to Denver or other airports that are nearby.
I think with the expansion possibly of Black Hills Energy, that's good. And having a great number of employees that are going to be flying in and flying out, that may help somewhat. We need more of that, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are there any obstacles that were found for the county adopting the plan related, the plans related to regional, the regional airport or Ellsworth Air Force Base?
Was there any, I'm sorry, see that?
Are there any obstacles that were identified? Because I noticed that one of your recommendations is to, you know, adopt, formally adopt this 2010 zoning plan that relates to the, is that Ellsworth or the regional airport?
I'm sorry, which one here?
It's the last sentence under Issues and Concerns, number two. The 2010 zoning plan written by KLS.
In all honesty, I'm not familiar with that one. KLS, PJ, can you help me with that?
I'm not familiar enough to know if that relates to the regional airport or the Air Force Base or both. I don't know what that is.
KLS is a new term to me.
That's what I'm asking.
The ACUS has to do with the sound around the Air Force Base. So anybody getting a mobile home has to sign a document that they understand to be ones are going to rattle their walls.
But I guess my question is, can you, did you guys during your time here identify any obstacles as to why the county hasn't adopted some of those things?
There hasn't been any, the ACUS has been around for a long time. When the JALUS was out, that was the time when Lindell and Nancy was here. And I only say that because they were involved with the Ellsworth Developmental Authority. And I think that report was brought before the board then, but it was never officially adopted. And that's one of the things Matrix is looking to do now, is adopt the recommendations for the protection of Ellsworth with this new plan.
So it's maybe just one of those things that got overlooked or just didn't get done?
Or they just didn't see.
To clean up the ordinances?
They just didn't think it was the priority at that time.
Okay, all right. That answers my question, I think.
But I, as I understood your question, Lori, you're wondering if there are aspects to those plans that have obstacles that would prevent us from adopting them.
Yeah, that's what I, you know.
It doesn't sound like we know that answer.
We don't know the answer to that, I guess.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any obstacles, particularly as it applies to Pennington County. In my experience, not necessarily in this project, but with the JALUS project two years ago, what's a little bit more of a challenge is Mead County. And the development that's occurring just north of the Pennington County line is presenting some challenges because you're seeing some subdivisions happening just north of Pennington County as you start getting into the flight line of Ellsworth Base. So if there is a challenge, it really has to do with Mead County.
Thank you.
Okay, so one of the things that we heard a lot about, of course, is the building codes and the needs for having a more defined building code provisions. So even though, again, this is not a regulatory document, we did come up with a few goals and policies to address that. And again, the goal would be the county has a diverse and strong local economy that sustains long-term prosperity for residents and businesses. And you're probably wondering why that's having to do with building codes. Well, primarily, a lot of the development occurs within the city because of the existence of building codes. And a lot of times what happens is you have the lending institutions that, again, have concerns with regard to lack of building codes. And so one of the things, that's the reason why, again, we have it within that category, is because we do believe that at least having some guidance on building codes would help to provide assurances for new residents and businesses that buildings will be built to a certain code and standard. So again, the one policy then following from that is the county should establish the comprehensive building code. We're not, again, this is not explicit as a regulation, and it's not explicit as to what type of building codes. The county could certainly decide what's appropriate, what's not appropriate to include. And then others to address that would be county should require building inspections for all new residential, commercial, industrial structures. And then finally, the county will require that all mobile home or modular homes placed in the county meet international residential code requirements. And again, this is really proposed as a way to encourage sound development practices and provide confidence to those that are coming from outside the area that, again, buildings are constructed to a certain standard. So the next issue was wanting some enhanced notification, expanding the area, and that's kind of understandable. We do see that come up a lot of times in rural areas because in rural areas you have big properties and you may only need to notify one resident because it's only 500 feet out. So the recommendation was to expand that. And again, the policy would be to encourage extended notification areas for amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning map atlas. Yes.
Was no one going to say anything about building codes and inspections? I figured we'd have a little discussion about that.
Okay.
You have questions?
I think, and there's a question for the audience too.
If you're going back to building codes.
Okay. I just want, you know, I'm assuming that the reason the county doesn't have building codes and inspections is it would require additional budget and staff, correct?
I would think so.
Yeah, and that would have to be, you know, fit into the county budget, right?
But I also think that it also has to deal with overreach as well.
Overreach of adopting standards that are pretty predominant in other areas? No, I'm just asking.
That's what I'm, I'm thinking that part of it has to do with overreach.
Because of the rural nature of our county?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to say something, PJ?
Oh, there's also another option to require houses to be built to a certain code, IRC possibly, and then have an outside agency inspect the home and then submit that to the department, where the price still falls on the landowner, except then you don't have extra staff at the county. It is a possibility. One of the biggest complaints we have is on honest contractors. Houses that are falling apart, foundations that are crumbling, driveways that are falling off. I mean, you guys see a small portion of the stuff that we deal with. And unfortunately, a lot of the ignorant landowners are being taken advantage of.
So you see the recommendation to do building codes as inspections as positive?
As a very small first step to fixing the problem.
Based on what you see day to day?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Lori, currently, we have electrical and plumbing. Both of those get inspected. Is that a true statement, or is that for PJ?
That is, they're done through the state.
Through the state? That's required by the state?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions on item three? Yes, could you please come to the mic and state your name for the record?
Good morning, my name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying. I just wanted to add in a comment related to the building inspections and what PJ had mentioned. If you have issues with things like foundations and driveways, those become soils issues. And your building inspectors typically are not necessarily qualified to deal with that. Normally, you have to have a specific engineer to do soils testing and recommendations. And now you're talking about adding significant cost and time into a building project. So I just wanted you to think about that as you go forward, that that's something to keep in the back of your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on item number three?
I have a comment. It's a fine line of what she was talking about. We want affordable housing, but adding additional burden on the building is going to increase the cost of housing. I understand that the better a house is built, the more energy efficient it's going to be, less problems you're going to have in the future, easier it's going to be to sell because your sidewalk's not pulled away from the side of your house or whatever. So it's a very difficult area to balance, in my opinion, as well as infringement upon landowner rights or the freedoms that they have to be able to do what they want to do on their own property.
So all actually very good comments and relevant comments. And if I could remind you, really, that's the whole point of this comprehensive plan and the process is to identify those issues and identify recommendations. And again, just to reemphasize, the comprehensive plan doesn't explicitly, nor does it intend to explicitly say that building codes shouldn't, are going to happen. It really recognizes it. And if it's something that the commission, as well as the board ultimately, because remember, again, this does go to the board for their final approval, think it's something that should be studied further, then this is the place to do it. Where, again, you talk about the balancing act, you know, is it something that the county wants to consider and study further? And then look at those details as what is good for Pennington County? Because each area is unique, and Pennington County particularly with its, again, balance between affordable housing, but also overreach, as you call it. So again, that, we do recognize that. And again, it's why we're not explicitly stating that it should, that it shall be. It's really just a recommendation that it should be studied a little bit further.
Okay, item number four?
Okay. Item number four, again, was expanding the notification area. And again, we do not explicitly state that it should be expanded to a specific distance, but yet the county should consider, you know, extending those boundaries or enhance notification when comprehensive plan amendment or zoning map atlas changes is being proposed.
Okay. Any questions from, let's go staff first. Any questions from, or excuse me, from the board on that topic? Okay. Please come up.
Janelle Fink, again. We spend a lot of time working with clients on rezoning and involving comprehensive plan amendments and things like that. One of the things that I have issues with is when you double the area of notification at 500 to 1,000. When you talk about your highest density of residential use, you're talking about 6,500 square feet per lot, which is an average of, say, 65 by 100. You could be notifying 50 or more homes in an area, in a dense area like Rapid Valley. Cost of certified notice is over $6 per notice. So now you've added $300 to the cost of an application, and you're notifying people that are two, maybe three blocks away from where the action is taking place. I don't think that's appropriate. In the larger agricultural areas, if you feel you need to expand it, that doesn't present an issue. But I think you're going to be looking at a disservice to the people because when you're doing something like rezoning or conditional use permit or different things like that that require notification, those people that are most immediately affected or impacted are the people you want to solicit comments from. We don't need any more of the, or I don't think it serves anything to broaden that to, you know, two and three blocks away. I don't think that helps the process. And again, I think that that's, would be an issue, and I would not recommend that in those lower or higher density areas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mark, did you have something?
I would have to say just duly noted to her comment after some of, and PJ's seen some of the discussions we've had to have that have lasted for multiple weeks on certain decisions we've made because of the fact that every week it seems like an additional 10 people show up to talk about why they don't like the idea. So, yeah, I mean, I definitely feel what she's saying.
Okay.
I'd like to comment a little on that because I just wonder if there's a way to have, instead of one requirement for the distances for every zoning situation, maybe in certain situations it's 500, in other situations it's different. Is that possible?
It's very possible.
Yeah.
And in fact, with the commission's direction, we can come up with something that could address that so that you don't render the situation, as Ms. Fink mentioned, which is, you know, excessive cost added on to an application.
Because the density of the area would determine how far that barrier really needs to be. Whereas in an agricultural situation, you have to have more distance, for to be fair.
So backing up a little bit as to how the plan is organized. Because of the expansive nature of Pennington County, as well as the different nature of metro areas and the rural areas, we actually did look at what we call focus areas, and that being Black Hills, the Rapid MPO area, and then the Eastern Plains. So one thing, just real quick off the top of my head, is that within those, within the Eastern Plains and within the Black Hills area, maybe there's a consideration for extended notification. But in the Rapid MPO area, you just maintain it as what it is today. That may be an easy way to address that. But again, we can look a little more closely at that and work with PJ and his staff on something that might be accommodating.
Okay. Item five.
Again, number five, dealing with expanded job opportunities and the recommendations to not only work with the Rapid City Regional Airport, but also with Mead County and SADITA to expand employment opportunities within Pennington County.
Can you give some examples of ideas, I guess, that you guys would foresee in being able to expand the job opportunities?
Well, what we would do is look at what the strengths are today. And going back to the existing conditions report that I was referring to and your current job base, your strongest job base today is healthcare and education. So our first area that we would recommend to look at is how do you strengthen those? Because those are actually good employee, higher wage industries that could expand in the area, particularly as you're trying to draw and provide services for the rural areas. And then also to supplement that is look at opportunities to expand the presence at the airport, whether it's dealing with the high costs or developing a program, which we mentioned here earlier as well, incubator program where the city, the county, SADITA looks at incubator program that would nurture smaller businesses, particularly those related to aerospace and military. So those would be two areas specifically that we think could be strong contenders for expansion.
Thank you. PJ?
Just before we go to the next item, was there anything more on that one? I know we're up against a time constraint. I didn't know if we're going to have a quorum after 10:30, so I just wanted to check to see if we needed to hit some highlights.
Okay.
Well, is anybody else having to leave, or is it just me? Because I was, probably can make it till sometime shortly after 11:00.
I've got to go at 10:30.
Sounds like we're hitting the highlights here for the next 20 minutes.
I would like to add something real quick to this, number five.
Go ahead.
I think there's a relationship between this issue and the affordable housing issue for a smaller business trying to find a place that's affordable to operate a business, I think can be also problematic to retaining new businesses. Is there any ways that a commercial lease on a property can be kept lower? I know, in my experience, in the city, the property tax and other city-related expenses are passed down to the tenant.
Right.
So that could be another similar way to attract jobs in the same way that you're trying to make affordable housing.
Well, you do tend to find that the higher rents for business are going to be in the metro area, like Rapid City, which is why you see those national retailers go into those spaces, is because they can afford the higher rents that people demand, that the landowners demand. So one, one way to address that is to really look for those uses that don't need to be on a high, highly traveled roadway, whether it is a business, a retail, or an employer, in other areas of town that are a little bit more affordable. So I think, again, getting back to an economic development strategic plan between SEDITA, the county, and Rapid City, identifying where those areas could be, developing infrastructure to support them, whether it is new roadways, or new, new, for lack of a better term, fiber optic, or accessibility for digital, looking at how do you help encourage that. The problem is, is that once you do that, of course, it becomes a corridor, and then the costs go up. So you're constantly kind of chasing that. But hopefully, at some point, by building a business like that, you then bring in some of those, those higher wage industries that do stabilize in those areas. So it's tough, but there are some small things that can be done, short of subsidizing, by helping to identify less costly property, because really, the biggest cost is the land itself and developing one.
Thank you. Any other questions on any of the items?
Did you have any general comments about roadways? Because I noticed there were a couple different ones related to traffic flow, and, you know, any, any just general comments about what, what the county could do to improve that?
Yeah, there was one specifically that dealt with improving east-west connectivity to the airport, which was definitely one that jumped out to me as definitely an opportunity, not only for the county, but, but given the presence of the airport, where the city can get involved, as well as potentially even the state, given the importance of that regional airport, is, again, improving the connectivity there. Also, another component to transportation and circulation is bicycle and pedestrian. So we actually did get some comments with regard to bicycle and pedestrian improved routes, but more importantly, some felt that it was, it was another area that can be built on to try to attract more tourism, particularly given, again, the natural resources within the county. People felt pretty strongly it's, it's an asset that could be more fully developed.
And then I had one other question. And I was kind of surprised about number 14, people saying the air quality is bad. That's very, I mean, I would think that our county would be considered in having fairly good air quality.
I would agree. When the issue came up of mining, that was really where that issue came up.
You said for mining?
Right.
For the quarries that are north of town?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was assuming it was probably pretty much dust. That's about it. I mean, all we deal with around here for the most part. The east-west corridor for the airport, are we saying that the four lanes on Highway 44 aren't sufficient? Or do we need more connectivity to those four lanes, to Highway 44?
I think it's just overall connectivity. Someone had cited east-west, but you're right. Omaha, is that the name of the?
Omaha, yeah.
Is, is, again, a very, has sufficient capacity, but I have noticed that there is some lack of connectivity going north in some areas. And so I took it to mean more as a, as a general connectivity issue versus expanding the four-lane road that's there today.
So maybe a suggestion would be looking at expanding Radar Hill Road to a four-lane.
Well, that's what I think, yeah, because, yeah, because most people just expect, you know, when you're going to the city airport, you jump on the interstate, you're there, boom, you don't have to go through all the lights through town.
Right.
Yeah. And so, you know, if you could hop up to the interstate, go over there and go south, but that's kind of tortured, too, you know.
I mean, the south route right now from the interstate is Elkvale Road, really. If you get on.
If you get further east, there's, there's nothing.
Right. If you get on Google Maps, it's odd, but it'll take you down Elkvale Road and then hop you up onto a little single-lane road called Jolly Lane.
Yeah.
And zip you over to, to, so, yeah, I think.
Yeah.
The better alternative would be Radar Hill Road, or to expand Radar Hill Road.
That's a very good comment, and good suggestion. We'll come up with something.
Well, yeah, that's what I was just thinking, is that people just don't want to weave through town and stop at all the stoplights.
Right.
Yeah.
That good comment.
Or even, even expand Jolly Lane.
Yeah.
And, and instead of having it corner over, back over to Elkvale, go straight through, because it could.
Yeah.
I know one of the biggest prob, big problems that I see over there is access from the interstate down to the.
To the airport.
Down to the, coming from the base, where we have a lot of people that fly off of the regional airport.
Mm-hmm.
And they have to come clear into town to get to the airport, where if you had a better access road from the interstate side to there, you would increase the traffic of that way to circulation.
Yeah, very, again, good comment, particularly as it relates to Ellsworth as well.
I say that with great trepidation, since I live right on Radar Hill Road, but.
I have a general question. So these were the issues and the concerns raised by the, the public, but you said not all of these were raised by the public? Which one of the, which, which of these are?
No, all of these here are issues that were raised by the public.
Okay, so all 15, all 15 issues?
So these aren't all of them, but these were some of the top 15 that we've heard more than once.
Okay. So then my, my next question would be, from your outside perspective, looking in at our county, what is Matrix, Matrix's biggest concern, or the issue concern that we should be considering?
Well, first and foremost is Ellsworth Air Force Base. We find, in fact, we do a lot of compatibility planning with, with jurisdictions across the country. And one of the things that we find some communities do better than others is protecting the job base that comes with the, the Air Force, or an installation, and in particular. The one thing that Pennington County has going for it is the tourism that goes along with that. But we think it would be, and granted, majority of that base is in Mead County. So it really does take a cooperative effort between Pennington and Mead County to make sure that there's not a lot of encroachment that happens. But one of the things that, that we think really needs to be emphasized is the importance of that for job base. And, and without that, there, there is some industry out here, there's tourism, but we do think that it's always a threat when Congress starts looking at reducing their reach, as far as installations are concerned. You've heard about the base realignment and closure. And the one thing that is important to note with Ellsworth in particular, is that there's, there's another bomber base in Florida. So if there is ever an opportunity for Congress to start looking at reducing their bomber fleet, one of those two bases would go. And so what we try to do is work with communities to make sure that they have a support base, they're constantly involved in land use decisions, so that when, when they do start, when that topic comes up, because it comes up periodically every five, 10 years, it's something that those officers at the base say, look, we're very involved out there, we know what's going on, they're very supportive. And that is really the first line of defense against losing that, that strong employment base.
Okay, thank you.
I had one more question on item six, the economic development proposal that mentions the county should provide incentives to attract clean, environmentally friendly businesses. I just wondered where that came from, and what kind of incentives those might be.
Well, it comes really just from a recognition that that is a growing industry. It's an industry that is footloose, meaning it can go anywhere. It doesn't necessarily need to be in a metro area. It can be in an area like a rural county. Some of the incentives may be looking at, and I don't want to call it a subsidy, but looking at where these industries can locate, maybe on airport property, because, again, even though they can locate anywhere, it's good for them to have access to regional transportation. So that is actually one of the biggest incentives, is trying to locate them and trying to help with the cost of, of land and building. And that would be the most natural area to locate them. So that, that is, again, a quick response on some of the incentives that can be considered.
You mentioned airport land?
Yeah, well, within Rapid City Regional Airport, within that area, there are hangers, there are industrial areas that allow for industrial-type uses, whether it is office space or spec industrial space, areas big enough that could support that type of industry, whether it is a wind energy company, or natural gas company, any of those clean industries that could benefit from locating at a, at an airport location like that.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Better logistics for our businesses.
Excuse me?
Better logistics.
Better logistics. You said what I meant to say in one word. So, yes.
Regarding item number 15, I'm sure you are aware that the county has just gone through a major revision of its mining ordinance. And so are the statements there in accordance with that, the revised ordinance that was passed?
I'd have to go back to look at the final version that was adopted, but yes, we were working with staff in coming up with these. But it is something that we do have to go back and double-check to make sure that it's in accordance with your final recommendations coming out of that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other items?
And so I guess what you're saying, these items, number one through 15, are not order ranked? They're just?
That's correct.
They're just numbered?
Right.
Okay.
We're pushing almost 10:30 here. Go ahead, PJ.
I was just checking. One thing that wasn't in here, I know the, which item was it here? Number 10 was about the flood zones. One of the things that we'd like to do is adopt a flood zone, similar to what the city has, so there is some consistency. Right now, the only thing that we really restrict in the flood way is our vacation home rentals through the new revised ordinance. What we're possibly looking at is some type of overlay into the flood areas where certain types of construction is prohibited. So we can get into that later, and that's something more for the zoning ordinance after this is done. But would there be any objection to looking at that further?
You're talking the floodway, not the floodplain?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No objections. And I think also in number 10, the county has safe and efficient stormwater management system. I think in a lot of areas in our new developments, the stormwater management has shown pretty expansively with that storm we had two weeks ago. The stormwater management is not sufficient, especially there off of Highway 79, Oakland Road, those developments behind the new highway department.
Yeah.
Caused a lot of diversion, and that could cause some serious problems.
And I think they categorize that as a 100-year storm also, so that 100-year floodway is just in that little area. So, okay, thank you. I'll leave it.
Seems like we've had about three of those in the past four days.
It's happened, yeah.
Any other questions on the goals and policies? And then I think that you were going to move forward with the next steps, or something along those lines?
So again, we, we do plan on being back out here next month to help with the formal adoption process. We're currently, again, in this kind of public draft stage, but I don't, I don't have the dates off the top of my head, but we do plan to be back out here in July, in order to move forward with the adoption process of the comprehensive plan. So this, we don't have this planned yet on the website. We wanted to have this discussion first to make sure that we get your comments before we do put it out in the public. So we will take your comments, work with staff, and revise some of those goals and policies. But do expect to have it up here by the 15th of this month. And we'll send out a notice once it does go live, and that way you guys can go online and start looking at the whole plan in its entirety.
Very good.
And that's it for me.
We've got one more question here.
Go, go ahead. Come on up.
Janelle Fink, again. I'm sorry, I, when we started this, I wasn't clear on the protocol of how we, when we were taking questions and stuff, so I kind of missed out. I would like to make a couple comments about the future land use designations. One of the things that I think, this agricultural designation of 10 acres, there's a huge difference between somebody with 11 acres and somebody with 1,000 acres. Right now, we have the 10 to 40 and the 40-plus. And I think that addresses the different uses pretty well. If you were going to lump everything over 10 acres in together, I think you're looking at a lot of diversity in the way that the property is utilized and the needs of those types of properties. The other question that I had is initially, when the comments came up, this area here is where we had a huge problem, where you went from suburban residential, 6,500 square feet, to three acres. That was a big hole in my mind. The idea that you are going to add in, I think, what did they call it? Rural residential, okay. That plugging into here is a really nice idea. The ranchettes of five acres, I'm not seeing any use for that at all. The difference between the three and 10 acres, where we currently have low, low-density residential, currently takes three to 10 acres. Those types of properties share a lot of similarities in three to 10. When you look in the county and how they're used, most of them are residential. And I just don't see that breaking it down into five acres is going to, going to add any kind of a benefit to that. I would take that rural residential and plug it in. And then the difference between, I think it will be confusing for suburban residential and urban residential, two different zoning designations with the same type of square footage. How does somebody understand exactly where those are going to be? Why would you have a difference between the two? I also think it's difficult for people to understand, today, lower, low-density residential is the three to 10 acres. And when you change this, now you're going to make it 2,000 square feet. I think that's confusing to take an existing zoning designation and drop the acre on it like that. I think it's going to be. I think that's confusing to take an existing zoning designation and drop the acreage on it like that. I think it's going to be hard for people to understand and hard for them to utilize. Okay, two other really quick questions. Open space and Native American lands. Open space in my mind is, okay, what do you mean? When you, when you say public lands, I understand exactly what you mean, forest service, school lands, um, public uses. Open space is ambiguous. What do you mean by that? When you're developing in the city, open space is usually like common areas between a development. So I think there's ambiguity in, in that type of designation. And then there was a comment that they didn't want to have public land because it denoted ownership rather than use. But then you came in and you added Native American lands, which is specifically BLM ownership or, so to me, it seems like that was kind of a, I, inconsistency in the way you were approaching that. I like public lands. I don't mind if you use Native American lands, but I think it's a lot clearer for people to, to use those. And if you're trying to just kind of keep things streamlined, add that rural residential in, and I don't think that you need, I don't think you need to change low-density residential to a different thing. And I don't think you need to add in an urban residential. Those are just my comments and my experience in the, in the way that we've had issues with clients and, and issues with development over the past multiple years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Okay. We don't need to take any action on item number two, correct? PJ?
So.
No, no action on i, item number two on the agenda, correct?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, adjournment has been moved and, and seconded. All in favor, signified by saying a aye.
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 Opposed?
Thanks.
Thank you.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.